Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the hybrid meeting of the planning board for May 28. This meeting is being recorded. Welcome. I'll start by opening meeting taking attendance. Chris Olney. Sue Philbrook here. Peter Morton.
Here.
Mary Foley.
Yeah.
And Gordon Brewster.
Yeah.
And I, great, thank you, everybody. And we have added name tags so people can know who we are. And Gail will work with you to get them actually figured out going forward in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully that will help the public know who we are. So those of you who are, I don't think any, anybody actually was a regular, but maybe people listen after the fact may notice that we've changed the agenda a little bit. We thought we would try something a little bit new and we would take public comment at the end of the meeting, which is often done with public meetings and gives the public an opportunity to comment on matters that come up during the meeting as well as other matters that they'd like to bring us, make us aware of. So I would first like to take a minute to acknowledge and thank Christine DeLicio, who is retiring member from the board. Christine was appointed in FY 2018 to fill a vacancy and then got elected in 2018 to the 2021 term. And then in the 2021 to just this May 2024 term. So she served for a total of more than six years, including through the pandemic transition from in-person meetings to virtual to hybrid. And during that time, the board has acted on a number of divisions of land, special permits for projects such as the Pine Street playing fields or village and Chapter 91 permits for profit row yard and the African reading, just to say a few. Welcome Laura.
Hi.
No problem. So the board also undertook during that time a comprehensive look at zoning. And throughout her tenure, Christine has been a strong voice for the issues she feels are important. And she's been very willing to attend countless meetings of other boards, including ZBAs hearings for Shingle Place Hill, many select board meetings and finance committees. So I'm sorry she can't be here tonight, but in appreciation of her six years of service, we've decorated a meeting tonight. We'll drop off this plant at her house. So I'll just give her a round of love. Great, thank you. I'd also now like to introduce new planning board members, Peter Morton and Gordon Brewster. Thank you for being willing to serve on the planning board. It's tons of fun. You'll come up to speak quickly. Thirdly, after the election, it's customary for us to vote members for one year's term as planning board chair and vice chair. So I guess at this time I'll take any motions to that effect.
So I'll make a motion that Sarah Craig is the chair of the planning board.
Any discussion? I guess I'll take a roll call vote. Chris Olney.
Yes.
Sue Philbrook.
Yes.
Markany.
Yes.
Peter Morton.
Mary Foley.
Gordon Brewster. And I'll abstain as well. Thank you. Gail, that was five yes and two abstentions. Thank you for vote of confidence and I hope I think shoes to fill. Ron was extraordinarily organized and always prepared. So hopefully I can do as well as he did in his six plus years as chair. I'll take a motion to appoint a vice chair.
I'll make a motion to Sue Philbrook to be the vice chair.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All roll call vote?
Yes.
Sue?
Abstain.
I vote yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Great. Five yes and two abstention. Thank you. So now to our business at hand. The first order of business is an approval not required application for 10 night circle. That was in our packets and I think we did not get the mylar here, but Mark has plans and it was also in your packet. The applicant, Tim Collins, were representative of him for him? Oh, I see Tim Collins.
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the Zoom call.
Great, thank you.
The plans are for Old Essex Road, but the agenda says night circle.
Okay.
Is this for night circle or Old Essex Road?
This is for 96 Old Essex Road. The, the property is owned by 96 Old Essex LLC and the address of the LLC is 10 Night Circle.
So it does say here, the application does say the location description of the property is 96 Old Essex Road on the application.
Yeah, I'm just afraid if any, if any of butters were looking at the agenda, they wouldn't know.
That's true. However, A and R's are not subject to a but no notification or public. So maybe we can at least discuss the application and decide how we should act on it. Mark, do you have a recommendation or maybe Mr. Collins wants to give us a description of his, that description of the, the work that you want to do?
Yes, thank you so much and thanks for volunteering your service to the town. Appreciate it. This is a, our LLC purchased this property, which is 60,000 square feet. It's got one residential house on it. And this is own requires only a minimum of 15,000 square feet for the lot. So this is four times minimum size. We are requesting to carve off a 2,149 square foot parcel parcel A as shown on the lot and that parcel will actually be sold to the abutting neighbor. Create a buffer zone for them. They've got a shed and some things in their backyard. So that's the, this is a totally conforming lot in every way. And creating that parcel and selling that parcel off will do nothing to make it non-conforming. So it will remain a fully conforming lot.
There are questions or comments? Does everybody see the parcel? Mark, do you have any recommendations?
No, it appears to we have the standard for the formality.
Okay. I think I agree with Mary, however, that it was not part of the agenda. So maybe we can we have 20 days, right?
Yeah, we would have that probably for
No, June 20th will be, that's May 20th. But just 20 days.
Yeah.
Oh, no. 11. Plus 10, 21 days.
So the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting is June 10th. Oh, no, no, you know what? We can do it when we do the task force. Yeah.
That'll be from Thursday on 6th.
It'd be better to just do it on a regular meeting. Something's
You want to do it at the next meeting just to ask?
Yeah, I think the confusion here is that the application because of the address was identified on the agenda as 10 Night Circle as opposed to as Mary pointed out, 96 Old Essex Road, Old Essex. Sorry. Actually, the, the plan itself is identified with an address. That's why it's okay, Old Essex Road LLC is identified as 10 Night Circle and the plan of land is 96 Old Essex Road. So somehow when it was given to us, it was picked up as old as Midnight Circle.
So, so if the applicant's agreeable, we can put it on the next planning board.
Yeah. If you're agreeable, it will be 21 days, not 20 days for this. If you're agreeable, we'll take it up first thing at a June 10th meeting. Let me just see if anybody has any additional comments or concerns. Why don't we look carefully at the plan and make sure it has everything we need?
Sarah, I just could ask a general question. The parcels being sold to the adjacent, the High End Burger and Yvonne. Okay, so it just as a buffer between the applicant's property and their property? Is that what it's just sold for?
That's correct.
No particular development reasons or anything or sizing?
I think that question before us actually is even if they want to put a, with a, approval not required, it simply does it, the lots conform to frontage and, and area. What they want to do with it is not our domain. Any work that was done on any of the parcels would be subject to zoning. So if they want to put swimming pool, for example, swimming pools require special permit under our zoning bylaws. So if that was the intent, I'm not saying that's it. Am I correct, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So there is something that looks like a road with a circular draw at the end. We've got it lined and it crosses over property boundary with Martha Elder. Is that an existing or proposed road that's in this parcel in question? Mr. Collins?
It's an existing, kind of like dirt driveway that was used by the previous owner. I do not use it and it will be abandoned.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So with you, your permission, Mr. Collins, we're going to table this until June 10th and our apologies for our failure to
That's perfectly okay. I understand. June 10th is fine.
Yeah, we also need the mylars.
Yeah, I provided that with all the properties of the application. So someone there in town hall has it.
Okay, great. And if anybody in the interim sees anything that they are concerned about, please let Mark know immediately so he can work the applicant to get it remedied. Great, okay. So we have a public hearing at seven o'clock for cell signaling technology. It's not seven o'clock yet, so let's talk about the liaison committee's task force updates. See if we can lock that up. For the new members, we have a list of other boards in town and we all have responsibilities to liaison from time to time with those boards. At our next meeting, we'll show you that list. I'll put it in the packet for next meeting sometime this week. Mark and I will get it together. And then next, so you can think a little bit about who you want to work with and see the, you know, the, the areas where we, some of them are easy. I do know that I got a call from the CPA Community Preservation Act team. They run, served as the liaison to that board and that was a fairly active responsibility. So that's something that definitely is a need that we should focus on. So we'll take that up next, next time. So MBTA Task Force, Chris.
Sure. So last Thursday, the joint meeting of the planning board and the task force, the MBTA zoning task force, and the select board was present at the meeting also. We went over proposed language for the new bylaw that would put the town into compliance with the state law. We were hoping to get a bunch of comments on the language, but given that it was a Memorial Day weekend and a short work week this week and we have this meeting tonight. We, I think we, well, we decided to postpone the discussion of this from this coming Thursday to a week from Thursday, if that's amenable to the planning board. And as part of that, I would ask every member to carefully review the language and submit comments in writing, please, by next Friday so we can put them together and create a new draft that can be considered the following Thursday.
Submit to Mark.
This Thursday.
This.
I mean this Friday.
This Friday.
Yeah, this Friday.
May 31st.
Is when we need the comments and the meeting will be the
6th.
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 June 6th. So if anyone would like a paper copy of this, I have some here listening.
Hit please.
Number one. And I'll put them on the
It should be on this.
It's on the website. Some people like this.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah, of course.
So I'm one of the ones that has a lot of comments and so didn't have time this weekend, but so I assume I'm submitting them to Mark, but then I was told the task force wanted them. I did ask via an email and I'm sure you're still catching up, if I could get the new model that lists the addresses for the finalized overlay district and the, the numbers, I think that would be helpful. And so what I found today, starting as redlining the document, is there a way?
I'd say redlining.
I mean, making my own copy and redline and adding comments. And then the, the final thing is I I'd like to understand how many meetings the planning board will have to discuss once we get it from the task force. I think it's important that we discuss it as a board, separate from the task force that so we can come to some agreements as a board.
Well, I think our thought was to just discuss it with the task force at a joint, at that joint meeting in a week from Thursday.
Ultimately, it's the planning board's obligation. So I, and even if it's just one meeting with the task force, I just don't think it's enough at least for my stuff, but so I'm just hoping we get some more time to discuss as a board is my.
Well, I think we can see how far we get on next Thursday and if we need to put time on our meeting on the 10th. We have another public hearing. I think we could take up some time. Are there specific issues that you, I mean, I have one that I would like, but I think we can talk about it with the task force. So, you know, but are there specific types of issues that you want to see the planning board discuss?
So I think I probably have three or four large issues and then, you know, a lot of small issues, but the large ones would be a lot more research on the site plan review and what's allowed and what's not. I think that's a big issue. I think inserting into the multifamily bylaw, allowing accessory uses by right that we currently don't allow by right is problematic. I think those should be taken out. And along with the site plan review issue is not allowing any special permitting for earth removal, stormwater management, flood plain, flood control district and storm waters. So I think we as a community would not benefit from that in any way. So I think that needs to be reviewed strongly since we can't really do it in sight.
So those are questions for so site, the, the extent of site plan review and the special permit. Well, I say exemption, moving special permit to site plan review for issues we currently have for special permit, earth removal and water, water overlay, water protection overlay are really, that's a legal question, right? I mean, we've been advised by our consultant these, that that's a that that's, that's what
We have, we have to remove the special permit tariffs. We can still keep in place the requirements that are the
The performance requirement.
Performance requirements for each of the special permits. However, it's not a special permit. It would just be reviewed under the site plan review process. So we can still ensure compliance with the standards, but it's not a discretionary permit where you can just say it's not in the best interest of the town. To meet the standard, you have to follow through an issue with the permit.
My concern is we cannot require compliance because we can't refuse a site plan for it as, as a right built.
No, that's not the case.
Unfortunately, that's what it says on miss.gov. So I think it's, it's good to be able to discuss it.
If someone's not meeting this, your performance standards and is not willing to do it. Or you write an approval, adding at these extra conditions that they have to meet, then it's on the applicant to appeal it. Or you can deny it and they can appeal it as well and prove how they, they would have to prove how they meet the standards. So they would argue that they've met the standard.
So I, again, and you know, we only have five minutes, but I think it's a good thing for the planning board and the task force and the consultant and town council to review because that is not what I've been reading on this state's sample overlay bylaw or or on the letters from E O H L C's.
We have discussed, Chris and I sending the draft after we had to the edits next Thursday to town council. So that it does get reviewed for their opinion. You know, again, it's just preliminary, this is the final review, but just to make sure there's no fatal flaws before this one vote to send it to the state.
So perhaps one of the discussions might be whether we submit something that we potentially think is, has, has this fatal flaw. We require special permits of these of them in these, on these topics or removable and water supply protection and then, and then see what HLC says. That's one strategy. Or we present something that we, we try to get, the alternative strategy is to get advice either from HLC specifically or from town council in advice. But it seems, seems to me that's a strategy question and maybe that's the, that's, that's the way to think about it rather than to debate whether or not why those special permits are there in the first place, because they are.
Right, but I, I believe, I mean, we'll get clarification. Emily's already said it very clearly that you cannot require special permits and you have to remove them from other zoning provisions for your MBTA district. So and if you don't want to in a particular district, then that's not an appropriate district to zone. So I think for the most part, the task force and the planning board has felt that the districts that they have chosen and voted on are appropriate. And removing those requirements are, not the requirements, but removing special permit requirement, but not the standards that's appropriate.
Is that your understanding of what you read on the HLC website as well, that special permits cannot be required for those who are flying under the multifamily?
Oh, correct. Yeah.
Okay. So I think we're in agreement.
E O H L C has rejected bylaws because of that.
Okay. So I think we're in agreement then on that point. That's good. That's good. Now the question is strategically, how do we move it forward? Okay. So and then the extent to which site plan review can be conditioned or a permit, a building permit can be conditioned based on the conditions in the, the performance conditions in site plan review. So that's a question.
Yeah. And so I'm just asking for time to be able to flush it out so that the members feel comfortable with what passed on.
And then I do think accessory uses, that will be on my comments as well, that the task force and the planning board could talk that through. I think that's a, maybe a specific list of what what, what is allowed under a current zoning and the proposal, the one that I flagged was the swimming pool one. So we can talk about that. Okay, great. So that, so we will not meet this Thursday. We will post a joint meeting for June, the Thursday, June 6th, I believe it is. The other liaison update is that the harbor management plan group has a meeting next, no. Next Monday, yes, next Monday. We are in the process of gathering a lot of input from stakeholders. So if any board members would like to give their input to the committee, let me know about any particular issues. Arrange that. I did represent some of the concerns that had come up in our Chapter 91 permit process. When I spoke with them as a representative of the planning board, I also, and those issues were congestion in the harbor, Chapter 91, public access and public benefit. The conditions that we gave to those Chapter 91 permits and the possibility of a harbor marine use overlay district as something that might be appropriate for certain areas where the boatyards are now. So that, those are some of the issues that we're talking about, but if you, or if you know somebody, for example, someone suggested that they speak with Barbara Warren from Salem Sound Coast Watch, who's done a great deal with the resilience and the whole of Salem Sound. So contact me and we will make that happen. So more to come on that. And there'll be a harbor tour at some point, a public harbor tour at some point this summer. So great. All right, seven o'clock. So being seven o'clock, we're here to hear the application of Old Glory LLC Percy and Mark Lewski for the special permit and site plan review as requested, required under section 4.2D 19 and sections 12.5 and 4.6 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 260,000 square foot office and research and development facility with a parking garage and surface parking totaling 535 spaces and other associated site improvements on 41.4 plus or minus acres located at two at Water Ave, assessors map 37, lot seven and eight in the LCD zoning district and filed with the councilor on January 28th. At this time, I'll ask for, I'll open the public hearing, roll call vote to so. Chris.
Yes.
Laura.
Here.
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 Mary.
Yeah.
Gordon.
Yeah.
Yes. Some of you may recall that this hearing began back in, I don't know, March or April.
March 11th.
March 11th. Exactly. Um, but taxing of our chair and the vacancy and, and if you remember the election, we are effectively down to five members who could vote on this application. And the permit requires a super majority of the board, given that we're a seven member board, five members. So we worked with self signaling to delay the hearing and I very much appreciate your willingness to do that so that we can have a full board seated. We appreciate that. One of the provisions of state law is that if someone is out of town or cannot attend, they are allowed to watch one meeting by the recording of one meeting, but we found, felt that with five members, that was not fair to the applicant and to the town and to the public. So really appreciate your willingness to do that and work, but we'll work with you to keep this moving. So the other thing. The planning board voted back in, I don't know, March or April. I'm sure Mark Lewski knows the to hire Weston Sampson to provide a third party review of the plans. What's in here tonight?
So maybe.
Yes, Darren is here from Weston Sampson.
Since, since we're starting the public hearing all over again, I felt that we discussed it that they could and they've already heard the intro again, which we have to redo. the intro or again, which we have to redo for our new members.
So um we hired Weston Sampson to provide a third party view review at self signaling expense. Um, and that review has actually begun and um the memo for um from Weston Sampson is we've started a um, I will send out to you where it is. There's under applications, self signaling, there's a folder. For uh materials, so we don't have it just in our folders for a particular meeting. Um, I will send a link to all of you with that. Um, so it's easy to find. But anyways, so Weston Sampson provided an initial um memo and I believe that self signaling has seen that and um has uh perhaps taken some of that into an into account. And we felt that was appropriate, given the their willingness to to wait. Um, appreciate that. So this hearing will take place over a number of meetings. Um, and the format will generally follow a presentation by the self signaling team, um discussion with the board and um we have a pressing clarification while they're presenting. I think we can uh take that, but in general, we'll let them to present. And then um after the board discusses, we will have public comment. And I believe there are copies of the plans on file with the town clerk.
Yes.
For anyone who wants to look at them, that's the willingness you can see.
And it is on the website as well.
Okay, and it's on the website as well.
Under planning board.
Courtney.
On under the planning board page on the left hand side, there's a and that's where the application that was filed is located.
Excellent. So it's on the website. It's probably the best place to look at it for. Now that we're Celtics aren't playing, you can read the self signaling application. Not funny for a few days anyway. Um. Great. With that, um, I will turn it over to the team. And if you guys could, as you present, if you could introduce yourselves or maybe you want to introduce your.
Thank you. Um, we we were asked to make a streamlined presentation. Um, so
share.
That's precisely what you're going to do. But before we start, I just want to say that it's it is nice after all that to see some light at the end of the tunnel now. Uh, and you may recall that with the help of the planning board, this project started in uh two thousand twenty one. At a time when we worked with the planning board to take a hard look at the uh zoning requirements in the L C D. And it was determined that they were a deterrent to the development that was uh encouraged by the master plan. So uh we went through a series of meetings with the planning board. And uh it was a very cooperative effort. Uh, it opened the door for us to be here tonight. Ultimately, at the April twenty twenty two uh town meeting. Uh, thanks to the planning board, we the town approved uh multiple zoning changes that increased building height from three stories, which was a residential, two stories, which is essentially a residential building height to uh fifty five feet and other dimensional requirements that made it feasible for uh Mark Allen and his team and Matt Connors to uh devise uh buildings in a site plan uh that could work to meet self signaling's needs. Subsequently, we also have been to the conservation commission. Uh, and they have issued orders of conditions. So we're uh finished with the conservation commission. Uh, we've also been to the zoning board uh because notwithstanding the change in the fifty five foot to the fifty five foot height limit uh because of the unusual topography. Uh, it was uh challenging to design a building uh that could uh accommodate the needs of the company at at that height. So we did get a variance from the zoning board. And uh we are now here tonight to tell you the rest of the story. And what we're going to do is a little bit different in order than at the March eleventh meeting. Uh, we're going to start with uh Craig Thompson, who's the chief operating officer from cell signaling, who's going to give an overview of the history and then uh mission of self signaling. Uh, he's going to be followed, I think, by Matt Connors, who was.
We're both going to talk about C S.
I do this every time. Uh, Anthony is going to talk about sustainability. Uh, he is the uh sustain chief, the sustainability officer itself. Then we're going to hear from Matt Connors. Then we're going to hear from Mark Allen, who's here from H G A filling in for Samir, and I'm sure he's going to uh uh he's been involved in the project all along. So this is not new to Mark. And then we're going to hear from Lynn Geisler, I think. And uh with us also, we have Greg Color from Columbia Construction, Peter Bordeaux, who's really the master ceremonies and Suzanne Martin, who's also here from cell signaling and Peter Muto. So we've got a big team. Not everybody's going to have a speaking role unless questions are asked that are specific to them. Uh, but with that, I would suggest that we hear from Craig Thompson.
Yeah, you go ahead and get started. Are you. Are you uh able to share?
Yep.
Great.
I think so.
You should be able.
Thank you for having us again. Welcome to the uh to the board member. Um, as Mark said, we did put together an abbreviated version. So we'll find most sort of summarize that you want to give a little bit of background um on C S Ts or on mission and values. And then it's part of our mission, really in our values. Uh, my colleague Anthony is going to speak about all the sustainability in terms of the company itself, but also more importantly, what we're planning to do. Uh, next slide. So I've been at the company for about twenty years now. Um, and the company itself is twenty five years old. It was founded by Michael Combe nineteen ninety nine. Many of you are aware, it's cut out of the moon and buy labs and other local company, which was in fact founded by Michael's father and they've been around fifty years and we've been around twenty five. And we we share actually many of the same values. Uh, and that's what many of them come from originally as anything being we continue to work, you know, closely with them. Um, our headquarters, um, which includes our R and D site is in Danvers on Travis Avenue, right off of one forty eight. And then we also maintain manufacturing facility in Beverly. Uh, in addition to that, we are an international company, a global company. We have three site additional sites around the globe and in the Netherlands to support our European customers as well as the African and the East. Um, a site in Tokyo as well as in Shanghai. Uh, you know, at this point, we um we support well over sixty, you know, countries around the world. In fact, more than half of our revenue or products are sold outside of the U S. Uh, and over the years, we've grown to at this point, almost seven hundred employees worldwide. Um, our mission is really quite simple. I mean, our our goal is to develop, manufacture, um, and sell the world's the highest quality research products that scientists all over the globe in biopharma and academics use to better understand cellular pathways or mechanisms of disease, particularly in the areas of cancer and neuro neuroregenerative diseases such as Alzheimer's uh as well.
Excuse me, can you just push the okay button on the screen? So then.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, taking well, you're going important to our scientific mission is the importance of us to uh acting in a socially, I guess, would consider responsible. And that goes for both of our efforts um to support scientists around the globe, both locally and, you know, globally, sustainability, um, the local community, uh, you know, and these things are duly during. The values of our company, they rest on full colors. Uh, they have to innovative science, um, best in class products uh to support, you know, scientists around the globe. Engage employees in social responsibilities. You know, at the core of this too is really the the engagement around, you know, we support not only development and best products, but support our customers around the globe. And um again, here more from Anthony and many of our efforts locally as well. And these serve as the, again, the pillars of our everyday decision making uh within the company. Uh, this is one of my favorite slides. We said it was the simplest way uh to really categorizing C S T where we we feel that really doing good science is important. Um, but it's just as important to just do good. And it's really the combination of these these two uh that that's um really for us. Um, say what C S T is all about. We've been very fortunate, though. Um, we've been very successful. We've been growing. Um, you know, very rapidly over the past twenty five or so years. The demand for our products continues to increase. Uh, you know, from our customers around the globe, we are essentially nearing capacity. And our Danvers and Beverly facilities, particularly within the lab. So in order for us to continue to support our mission, uh, develop and support more products and more scientists, you know, we do have to expand. And this is where the site I'm at one you know, comes in. Um, this is an outstanding opportunity for C S T, not only to continue to drive um the development of your manufacturing products uh and support our customers, but to do so in a manner that fits well with our values. We need to restore uh, you know, light in sight there, uh, bring it back uh to you know, something that I think both the ways of C S T as well as the local community will appreciate uh using. So it's a great opportunity for us. Not only support our customers, but also I think give back for employees and local community uh as well. Um, you know, we we anticipate employment at the site would for phase one, um initially be around hundred seventy five, actually hundred, probably maybe two fifty or so and now the uh the phase two, which would be the um uh completion of the two hundred and sixty thousand square foot plan that we have in place for up to five hundred. And now I'm going to turn over Anthony, Anthony and Jay, he's going to talk a bit more detail about uh sustainability, both of the company and of the site in particular.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Just to really reiterate what he touched upon. Environmental and social responsibility are core to our mission and core to our values. And we were the first life science business member to join one percent for the planet. So what that means is we are actually giving one percent to at least one percent of our total annual revenue, so not profit regardless if we're profitable. Um, to environmentally driven nonprofits. So that's been really exciting and helped expanded a lot of the philanthropy that we were already. Um, we have a climate goal, so we're looking at net zero emissions globally through all of our operations that Craig mentioned by twenty twenty nine, which will be our thirtieth anniversary. Um, we have several run employee run grant committees, so awarding grants to local community nonprofits. We have lots of employees that volunteer their time outside of work in our communities. And they'll be able to do a lot of work inspiring the next generations. So we have several scholarships. We actually just started our internship program today. Craig's daughter is my sustainability intern. So we're doing a lot on all these fronts and you know health is such a big purpose and that's, you know, why we exist. But at the same time, you know, we really want to create a healthy planet for everyone to. You can go ahead to the next slide. Just want to give a very high level overview of some of the features and components that we've been able to work with Mark and the entire project team to incorporate on this project. This is really exciting. I'm really excited to be part of this project. It's the first time C S T has had the opportunity to build their own building from the ground up. So our headquarters in Danvers was an old hotel that we converted to a lab building. Um, and our towards the road facility in Beverly was actually to make the bio. So this is the first time we are really able to incorporate a lot of these sustainability components that have been retrofits or after the fact in our existing buildings. Um, excuse me. Labs are very resource intensive, so compared to an office building, municipal building, you know, school using a lot more energy, generating a lot more waste, using a lot more water. So we're thinking a lot about that in the built environment. But we're also looking at this old quarry site and being able to revitalize and bring in bring in the species. You'll hear from Ling and what we've been working on. We also have a restoration biologist on the team. The goal with the new building in both phases is really electrification. So reducing fossil fuel use, hopefully limiting fossil fuel use on the site. So being able to maximize renewables. Whether that's solar P V, we're going to use geothermal for heating and cooling and domestic hot water on site. So that is a really exciting opportunity. I think for us, as we look at our peers in Kendall and Cambridge, the Boston area, we have a lot of opportunities being up here on the North Shore. They're working to develop. Um, we're doing a lot to engage our employees on the site. So the climate side, it brings um energy load reduction. Emissions reduction is very important, but health is also very important. So we're looking at healthier materials in our spaces. Indoor air quality, indoor environmental quality, and then connecting to nature outside and bringing it inside as well. We are going to provide public access and have a trailhead parking lot that will connect to the adjacent trustees. Monolith property um and employees will be able to use that as well. So lots of exciting things that we'll get into more details as we go um and talk more about the project. But just wanted to highlight some of these. And with that, I think I'll back it over to Matt Connors from Hancock.
Um, so I'm Matt Connors. I'm from Hancock Associates. I'm a regional engineering manager and a licensed P E in Massachusetts. Uh, I'm gonna try to keep this high level, but we'll go through some of the site plans and touch on things that you guys would be interested in. I recognize that we're going to be diving deep, I believe, in the second. So from a very high level, uh, our site is formidable. Um, in one side of it, we have a pretty significant wetland. And then on the left side, plan left, we have uh Sawmill Brook. And we have. Uh, the nearest residential zone is on the other side of one twenty. It's on the south side of the property. So pretty much everything around us is commercial. Um, we have some interesting topography. Uh, in the middle of the site, there's about a sixty four foot cliff. Um, that we're trying to work around. We have the building split for a high and a low. Mark's going to try to talk about that. Uh, but this kind of gives you some relevance as to what we're we're trying to work through. This is a picture from the top of the cliff looking uh out towards the monoliths and one of our neighbors. And then we have some uh interesting, because of the photography, we have some uh challenging uh erosion control measures that we have to deal with. This is or was the main drive up to the top plateau area and you can see over um uh some rainstorms, it starts to to get pretty gravelly. Um, at the bottom of this, not showing the picture, but one of the uh kind of short term measures we've done is actually put hay bales across it to try to just control what's going on out there in the interim. Uh, here's our site. Um, so basically what this shows is uh all setbacks related to group one twenty eight, at Water Ave, our neighbors. Um, and as far as zoning goes, we're compliant throughout the project, just in any of the setbacks. Um, this shows the differences between green spaces that we have, the built spaces and the paved spaces. In the upper left hand corner, uh about a little bit more, that we have some shaded green and that's basic tension uh and and other stormwater basins. We have a ring road that goes around the site. It starts at Atwater Ave just before the Mac property. And it loops the property completely. So we have a high side and a low side. Um, and that provides two distinct entrances for the property. On the far end, we have a parking garage, uh which is more of utilitarian entry, but we come in, we have phase one and phase two for a nice front uh southern courtyard entry. And then we go around to the parking garage down to the low side in the lighter gray is a uh parking area for our neighbors with the monoliths. Um, so we're providing some uh amenities as we go. And then we have in the uh between the parking garage and phase one, phase two uh main buildings, we have our more utility entrance of shipping and mechanical spaces. Uh, this fine shows more of the drainage network. Um, when you plan on the upper right hand corner, uh, we have a detention basin uh that collects majority of the water from that side of the site and then it will transfer it uh to the two detention or one of them is a um infiltration basin, larger one, and then there's a rain garden, smaller one. Believe one's going to talk about the rain. So as we go through the site, we have stormwater. We are maintaining the same drainage systems and. So as we go through the site, we have stormwater. We are maintaining the same drainage systems and, and runoff as we go through. This point kind of shows the utilities as we go. So blue is water, green is sewer. Basically what we're showing is we are supplying water in a loop around the site. We've talked with the department. We've been in contact with made in shock with the DPW. But we're getting water from actually underneath one twenty eight from the builders. Similarly, we're collecting sewage from the site brought to a pump station. And that's being discharged under one twenty eight to Mill Street. We're providing some utility infrastructure as they're back to, we've just got it a bit from a public doing process that basically is for improvements to Mill and Forest Street as well as applying our, our project. And then we have red and yellow, and this is electricity, uh, supply and gas supply for our generators. As Anthony had discussed, we're trying to limit whatever we have for fossil fuels on the project as much as possible. Uh, and then big thing on this is geothermal. So we have a couple of borefields, phase one and phase two borefield. And we have gone through several iterations to try to make this work. And I believe that we're pretty solid in where we are now. And if you have questions on it, I believe Greg can probably answer those. As scheduled, everybody's always concerned about schedule. This is a really big project. It's going to take us a bit of time. We are trying to schedule blasting in twenty twenty four. Geothermal will start after that, and then we'll get into some site grading. Towards the end of site grading, we'll get into utility infrastructure and outwater out and site utilities as we go. Once that's done sometime in the end of twenty twenty five, beginning of twenty twenty six, we're going to start foundations and go pre fast work. We'll be in heavy construction from twenty twenty six through twenty twenty seven. And then we'll start doing our landscape landscaping for the project in twenty twenty. It's at least three years, probably four. And then this is the aerial, aerial view looking south, and I'm going to hand it over to Mark.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, Mark Allen, principal of the HGA Architects in Boston. I'm going to show a few views of the building and then one of the key things will also show our views from one twenty eight. And that was a question by Zed. So this view is showing kind of, you know, an overall cliff in the center exposed phase two on the right off the page is the Manchester Athletic Club. Also in the center is our entry pavilion at the top of the site, a phase one building mass and then garage, which is shown with solar PV. The other areas of roof are also shown PV on the available spaces. And actually, before we go to the next slide, the general approach is to have a building mass that is leaner on the top of the site and then steps down as you, as, as it crosses the cliff. So taking advantage of the natural gradient site to, to, to build. This is a view from the bottom of the quarry, looking at that cliff face. In the center, partially obscured is the lobby. Phase two would be off to the right, so phase one. And then you see the kind of stepping two floors, basically at the level of the top of the site, efficient three floors to step down. And then we've taken advantage of those steps to create terraces, which is a nice feature. There's also outdoor spaces at the top of the cliff that will be used by folks and then a quarry garden at the bottom. This is a view from the other direction. So the building is kind of longer and lower at the top of the site. Phase one is on the right hand side, the lobby entry in the middle and then phase two to the left there. And then lastly, for views, go to the next one. This is also of the entry. Looking just at phase one through the glasses, the lobby spaces. Anthony mentioned, one of the things we're trying to do is build in a number of features around sustainability. So behind the glass here, you see the mass timber structure of that lobby pavilion space. And that's a strategy, mass timber is a strategy we use to reduce the amount of embodied carbon that goes into constructions. That's, that's a nice feature. The other thing that we're, we're doing is really trying to enhance the kind of indoor outdoor experience so that so that it really connects to restored natural landscape. Okay, the next are two last slides that I've got are views from one twenty eight. This is looking north with CST on the left. And we have a video, these are stills from the video along the bottom, showing the, the proposed building. Birds eye view and then on the right, you see that's completely obscured by that's foliage. So similarly, if we go southbound, CST in this case is on the right, bird's eye view. You can see the general orientation when you're down at not even high height, you're more like an eighteen wheeler height. You're still completely obscured by that's foliage. I think we have a video on it, have to show perhaps later. So the intent, of course, is to demonstrate that that view is protected. See, see the bill. Questions on that?
Can I record? What time of year is that supposed to be?
So that, the, the photos that we took were fall foliage. And that was showing, you know, full leaf treatment. There are, what we are doing is kind of back planting along the, um, the garage building with evergreen. And Lincoln, speak more precisely about that, but that's the, that's the intention. So, yeah, it's here, you're next.
At the end of this, you guys are all going to be able to like recite the actual site plan to us. So while we're pulling this up. Wait for it. Perfect. So what can I speak to on this? We haven't heard from already. The majority of our parking will be in the garage, phase one and phase two garage. On the south side, we have our visitor spaces and TV spaces out there. To the wellness piece that Anthony touched on earlier, the actual, the walkability of the site is pretty fabulous. So it's really kind of throughout and then even coming down to the trailhead parking for the monolith that was discussed previously. We've worked pretty closely in sharing our visions for this with the trustees. And so having a dedicated parking area out there, we think is a wonderful amenity for everybody, including the people who work at CST. We do have some pretty interesting restorations for the landscape. So I think all of the wonderful sustainable things that the building is trying to do, we're absolutely trying to match that with the landscape. We have a number of, of areas that we do need to heavily screen, one being that one twenty eight that we just discussed. So at the southern part of the image here, existing vegetation to remain, we want to keep as much as possible. But this is where we're really kind of heavily going at a lot of layered evergreens and various sizes. So some of it is where we just had a discussion today about our value engineering. So where the big money goes is to the southern part to make sure that we can heavily screen that. And then also to the northern part so that when folks are in like level five of the building, we have a little bit of screening for our neighbors to the north and some of the utility pieces. So I think folks have probably seen our very extensive planting list in there. But some of that from a real highlight, the rain gardens and the lower quarry garden, these are places where we're really celebrating the ability to kind of restore the environments there. And we understand that the stormwater detention, the two basins, they have to, from a maintenance perspective, they have to be able to get a mower in there. So that planting in the basin is a little, it's more fleshy perennials. But in the rain gardens, we can have a little bit more expressive, you know, rain plant material. It does really well in those conditions and actually will provide some sort of little bit of cleaning of the water as well. So I think if we go to the next one. This does highlight our sixteen spaces that we're providing for the monoliths. We go ahead. More before and after images. I think these are pretty telling in what we see with the site from the existing condition. If we go to the next one, you see a relationship also with one twenty eight, the MAC and then Brady and, and the other existing elements of the site. The next set of images flips us around. So this is one of those projects where like the before and afters are really, they're powerful. So if we go to the next line, this is what we're all envisioning, a big restoration of what we can provide for the site to mitigate some of that erosion too, that had come up at the last discussion. We know it is an issue. If you before and Matt, if you don't mind. This was part of our submission that we're required to do, taking an analysis of the canopy loss and replacement. There is actually not, as, as Anthony was saying earlier, we've been working with a group from Biohabitats at College S. So they've done a full assessment. I believe you have that documentation of what's actually out there on site. The quality of the plant material that's there is not very high. So any of the canopy that we're actually losing will be replaced and significantly then some by much more stronger biodiverse plant material that's really going to help restore this location. And if we go to the next one, I think that's the, we've worked really closely with all of the team to identify various landscape typologies where we can, this is informing our planting palette. So we're not only looking at the report that the folks from Biohabitats provided, but what's out there existing and doing very well, that's actually a native plant material. And then what the soils are really telling us, because the project itself, we are bringing in quite a lot of soils for all of this. We want to do it in a very judicious manner so that we're listening to what's there and not trying to say, oh, let's do all of this big forest right on top of the exposed rock surface. So that's what we're starting to work with in this development, not only these typologies, but that's our, our plant list kind of gives us that information that we'll be pulling from as we continue to go forward. And I think that's.
Well, we've got one more piece that we're adding on. Because of the project delays we've had, Columbia Construction's been champing at the bit. And Greg Keller has some plans that he's going to initiate in June that don't necessarily apply, require completion of the special permit site plan review process. We've reviewed that with Paul Orlando and with respect to blasting. And so I'm going to let Greg explain what he's going to anticipate starting in June and then moving forward.
I'm Greg Keller with Columbia Construction. We're a commercial construction firm out in North Reading. We've actually partnered with Self Signaling for the last twenty years. We truly embrace a vision and have really espoused the concepts of this project. They've asked us to look at the overall site and how to best approach it. As Matt said, there's probably about fifteen months of site preparation before a building even starts to take place. And that includes creating a, a lot of rock removal, a lot of new utilities throughout. If anybody's actually walked the site, if anybody had a walk a few months ago, it really is a a blighted site. And so our first goal is to secure the site. It's been open to machinery and, and everyone else walking the site, our first activity to secure the site, prep the area for getting rid of all the excess materials, flattening out where we can, and then starting a, a blasting activity in the cliff face itself. The, as you saw in the buildings, the building actually carves into that rock cliff. So our main goal for the first couple of months is drilling through from the top down and blasting out sections to create basically the, the footprint for the building. And so over the, the first couple of months, that'll be the, the sole activity. We anticipate about three months of that work ongoing. Once that work's done, then we'll bring in the geothermal team and they'll start drilling six hundred foot wells. We're going to install approximately seventy to six hundred foot wells. These wells are closed loop, so it will not have any water exchange whatsoever. And then once we do that, we anticipate that taking till the end of this year. The beginning of next year, we'll start all of the utilities coming in from the work underneath one twenty eight, creating the loop, creating the loop road, bringing in gas, electric, stormwater management is, is critical on this particular site. And then creating footprint to start the, the foundations.
But we didn't want to surprise you. Thank you. So we're here as a team and if there's any questions that we can help with tonight, we'll do that. Otherwise, I know you have a lineup of subsequent continuations of the public hearing to specifically address topics that we alluded to tonight.
Matt, Mark, what do you think? Should we ask anything from Western Sampson? Do you want to just do any, any comments or, um, because I know you, you've looked at it to date, maybe just give us an overview where we are?
Sure. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks, everyone. This is Adrian Kirk, I'm from Western and Houston, and I'm a team leader. Apartment engineer, LSP. So we've completed our initial peer review, as was mentioned. We received last week some additional information from the applicant, including responses to comments and some revised site plans and traffic study information. So our initial scope, I guess just for timing included a, the initial memo and then the three hearings. They anticipated having like a closeout supplemental memo, responding to comments. Most of the order has sort of changed at this point, so. You know, talk with Mark a little bit about the timings. We certainly want to support planning board on review of items. So it sounded like the traffic might be the first element. But also our scope, I guess we, I guess we wanted to attend this meeting today to understand sort of the next steps from the planning boards' perspective and how we can support that. And then also just capture like the next steps for our, our scope, which I mean, just initially included the initial peer review, which we've completed, some site visits, which some of our team has completed. We will have additional site visits. And then obviously the next step would be the logical at this point to issue a technical response to the. to issue a technical response to the comments and just flag what's still outstanding to make those hearings more productive as they come up in June and going forward from there.
Can you give us just a overview of your initial comments? Did you see any significant issues that you've been discussing with them? Or I'm sure there's a lot of technical issues. Is there any overview, overarching concerns, positive or negative?
Sure, so I'll start with the positives. So yeah, we had an architecture and landscape architecture review. So on those elements, I think we were, you know, as applicant had presented, they're using very harmonious materials and planting certainly are going to be a vast improvement to the site, which as the photos show is a quarry. So having addition of tree camp, it will be significant. We had quite comprehensive review of subject area. So there's noise standards that we reviewed, you know, certainly the blasting is going to be part of that. We had site development comments, again, with disruptability, site civil stormwater. Quite a few technical comments and we're still digesting what we received last week on the stormwater elements. The contractor is going to get a construction general permit for all the work because they are modifying more than one eater. So that was part of our review. And then I guess another element is just the traffic studies. So we're still reviewing that updated information we received last week. I think the phasing has been a question because there's two phases of work that are in the site plan and special permit. The traffic study, I think, has both elements covered, but mostly focuses on the phase one. And I know that's going to be the primary focus of the next hearing where we present at. Sort of a broad overview of some of the generally, I gave you 30 pages of technical comments and we received about 26 pages of responses.
And we'll put all that in the folder. Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
Ask a question, just a general question. I'm not out of line here. The phasing of the project, there's two phases here. Not so much about the business operations, what happens in the building, but as far as the land preparation, stormwater, utilities, servers, roadways, landscaping, how is that, how does that fit in with, if only phase one will be first?
So the phase one, phase two, buildings, the site has to be constructed.
You're building a full build out to handle phase two on the initial construction?
So all the utilities are in phase services, so you can't use it there and rip off everything. Well, we can, but we'll rip off everything and it will cost a lot of money. So the intent is all the stormwater gets installed as part of phase one and all the utilities being installed as part of phase one. We're doing actually infrastructure to bring utilities to the site right now before we even get into phase one. So there's a lot of moving parts to this whole thing. When we get into phase two proper, it's more of the building. We're going to bring services to those building footprints as part of phase one. Phase, and actually Greg can touch on this, but we're blasting the areas for phase two in phase one and then tarising those areas. Because once we get a building built, we don't want to turn around and reblast those areas right next to this. There's a whole lot of complication that nobody needs. So there is part of the revised plan, there is an interim rating plan that shows what we're doing with those areas and how we're tarising them.
So you'll be planting those areas in the interim period?
Yes, the majority of it will be seeding, just because we know that we'll be pulling that out. But they will be adding soil and so that we can get things in there from erosion control perspective. And then, then once, you know, all the blasting work is done, there's, you know, it's more of like a grassland habitat up at that upper piece. And then the other pieces will be planted because phase one could be sitting there for like, you know, five, six, seven years. So we want to make sure.
Next question, what is the?
I don't know, don't hold me or not, but it's, it's, it's a few years in between. So we have time, it wants to look, and we've, we've done a number of rendering some things of what it will look like during its phase one piece. So it doesn't look like it's just waiting for phase two to come in.
Okay. One summary, your utilities, water waste, gas, services, roadways, storm drainage collection, all that goes in as part of phase one construction. That's literally the building that we're talking about.
And the garage. And phase two garage, correct.
I have a few questions and you asked one of them, but I'll follow on with, for clarity, are we being looked to permit phase one and two now? And if it is that eight years out or whatever, has, have we, as a planning board, ever had that long of a site plan review special permit go? As we all know, things can change drastically, you know, overnight. So are we comfortable permitting now for eight years out is my question?
I have no idea if this is going to be eight years.
No, I know, I'm just using that.
Not tomorrow, okay.
But I saw with the, the one slide, even phase one is five years, right?
So build time to even get up and operational is about five years. This is not a small project. So when we look at actually getting to the point where everybody can start coming in, working in the building and see if you can get their operational efficiencies going. There's going to be some timeframe in between that before we can start thinking about the phase two portion. So, and as you saw on the plans, the phase one, phase two buildings are very closely related there. Phase two isn't as planned out as phase one is, but they work together. So what we're trying to do is have this permitted, so it's a complete project at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just kind of an open question to the board because with other potential projects up in that area, traffic studies could change. Topographies could change, so.
And the traffic is a very good point, which is why our traffic report basically says at the end of phase, at phase one, and before we start phase two, we want to reevaluate traffic.
That'll be a condition, I suspect, of any approval we get.
Yeah, yeah.
You're absolutely correct. A lot of things can change between now and then. But, but as the site is kind of self-contained and there's not a lot of interaction, it really what we're trying to do is get that interior site fixed. We have confidence that we can build it. We have confidence from you guys that you'll let us build it. And then as we progress, we will address the traffic, the interaction with the other process.
And then. So we had the views from 128. Have anybody looked at views from, it's now called the monoliths at D Rock? Will those views change? I mean, will they, will, will the view from those vantage points have a clear view of this building now, right? Like so instead of, one question. And then. With the visuals, with the trees, and I know you said you were going to be planting evergreens, but how many years does it take an evergreen to get that height that's going to block out that view?
If you look, so we're planting in all different sizes and some of them, we're putting in about, you know, 25 feet high. So some of them we're spending quite a lot of money on. Some of it will take some time, but it depends on the species, but there's just, and it's not all evergreens, it's quite, it's an extensive list. So we are really looking to make sure that we are putting the biggest material where it's the most critical, on 128 and then the fourth piece. So typically, I mean, we always say sleep, creep and leave, right? When you, when you plant something, it's going to take, you know, three years until it's really, really, really well established. And then depending on the species, which is very different, we can get into that in more specifics at the landscape meeting. But we're really trying to jumpstart things so that we are getting good screening. Yes.
I have some of my own that I'm looking for the sleeping.
Exactly.
Not going so fast. Thank you.
Some people have suggested that they'd like to see the project from 128, utterly enough.
So a couple of questions, how many employees are currently housed in Danvers and Beverly?
Between the two sites, we have about, let's see, about 550 employees based in Massachusetts.
So then this facility, all completed, is intended to house those people? Are you intended to double in size as a company?
It would be a combination in the beginning. We have no intention of closing either of the, you know, current facilities. So phase one would be, you know, at least the people who were initially occupied would primarily come out of the current Trask Lane facility in Danvers. Again, it's primarily what we call an R and D and innovation center. So it would include, you know, we'd try dividing up the R and D team at that point as well as housing a lot of the corporate functions in the facility as well. And then the expectations that allows us to grow in multiple sites over time and eventually again expanding as part of phase two.
And that rendering that you showed was the 55 foot height? Is that what, it was, okay. And I think I read there are some utilities or something that may extend beyond that, is that the case?
Right, and we did get relief from the zoning board for those as well.
And I don't know who.
Yeah, the mechanicals, so the handling units and so forth. Typically go into a mechanical penthouse, that's the case here.
And I just, I mean, this may not be the time, but just the water, and I'm new to this, this is my second meeting. So I've been following it a little, but so these questions might be redundant. Tapping into the town, water and sewer, that's correct, right? And I'm just curious, has there been studies done about the impact of that? And the fact that we as a town are just passing some funding to take a hard look at our water facilities now? And I just want to make sure that as we do that, we keep this usage in mind.
With respect to sewer, my understanding is that 62,000 gallons of flowage has been assigned to the limited commercial district. And as you may know, we cooperated with the town in obtaining a Mass Works grant to extend sewer and water from Summer Street up Forest to Mill to 128. Pardon me?
I did not know that, so thank you.
That's, yeah. So that, that project has been put out to bid by the town. The bids came in last week, I think it was last week. And we've been meeting on a regular basis with Greg Fettishbeal and Chuck Dan to determine the mechanics of all that. Self signaling is making a contribution. And we're now trying to work with the town because the town's interested in extending those lines down at Water Avenue to the future DPW site, which is going to be where the compost facility has been located. So there are a lot of pieces in motion here. But the sewer, the sewer question has been answered. The, the water question is our supply is not something that's been discussed.
All right, and one last question for sustainability. So you talked about all the community work you do, which is great. How much of that work is done with the local high schools and elementary schools?
It's a high percentage in, you know, kind of all around Essex and we've been expanding. You know, we do a lot in Danvers and Beverly, where we have our two existing facilities and we've been working to do more. So we've been doing work with the Manchester High School and Middle School, I believe. We're a big supporter of Change is Simple as well, a nonprofit that does environmental education in public schools to support them, and they're getting into a lot of schools. So we do a lot of that and it's various, I think, it's again employees volunteering time and going and supporting science fairs or doing experiments with different groups.
And interns.
And interns as well. So our internship program has started, it just started college, but we also have a high school now.
Laura, I'm just going around, okay. Laura Tenney, thanks for the presentation. A few questions that I have in no particular order. The, the visibility from 128, I wanted to say, it's not any concern about the aesthetics of the building and the landscape. Those are going to be a vast improvement over the very degraded disturbed site. So I can see that you're looking, the renderings are showing leaf on season, that the building is screened, the massing of the building is screened, but I am curious about leaf off season. I think you started to address that Lynn with the evergreen screening. It sounds like it's going to be vegetation versus topography mostly. So I just want to understand that a little bit better when we get to that meeting about the, how the building is going to be screened. That's the massing of the building. Then I'm also thinking about the light pollution from the building, particularly given the very glassy atrium. And, you know, that could be a matter of the hours that the building is lit. But I am wondering about that in terms of a nighttime visibility analysis of that corridor and what you're going to see through to the trees, especially in leaf off season. I don't know if Mark is going to do address that.
Yeah. We, from a site perspective, we have fixtures that are dark sky compliant. We have looked at generally the light spilling from the building. There are fixtures that need to be on some 24 hours for just safety purposes, emergency fixtures. But they generally are, you know, keep the building relatively low lit. The lobby, I'd have to, that's a specific one that I'd have to probably respond back to.
Sure.
The, the current thinking on the lobby is that the lighting is not uniform throughout the space. The occupancy of it is at the bottom of it. So the lighting was to the floor level and where people are standing, which would not be visible from 128.
Okay, yeah, because it's a double light space at least, right? So that whole thing is kind of peeping out.
Yeah, let us come back to you with specifics on that.
Yeah, I think for me, the visibility from the corridor is about how important that kind of wooded feeling as a, as a gateway and an entry to KPN is because I think, you know, our tourism economy and our, the kind of character of the place are really that, that kind of wooded corridor is really important to that feeling of you're entering a place that's different from everything that's happening, sort of South Danvers and beyond. So maintaining that, I think is really important. It's less about, is it a beautiful building? I'm sure it's going to be a beautiful building and landscape, but really kind of protecting that corner. So getting to that light pollution at that meeting. Some other questions I had about the traffic studies and the phasing, I know we'll get to that. I know it's a phased study. If, if this is a 500 person building and at some point it's enough of a demand, let's say the CADA system wants to serve it or some other kind of shuttle system, have you thought about that circulation in the plan where there could be a future bus or transit stop inside the circulation? Did the grades of the road accommodate it and the size of the road? Imagining they do since you have to have burn seagrass, but just a thought about circulation, if you could accommodate a future transit stop in there. Look forward to hearing more about resiliency and sustainability, different topic, but certainly the wildlife biology and the habitat. What are the key indicator species? What, what are we really trying to, you know, are there certain corridors that we're trying to connect and understanding that on a little bit more of a regional basis? If there's any been, any conversation with the trustees about what their specific goals or thoughts are? I know they're very kind of conservation minded in terms of species protection and so forth. Be interested to hear more about that. And then the, the stormwater plan and erosion control. I'll be curious to find out more to just understand sort of what's outside the limit of work. When your area that showed kind of grassland cover in that lighter green and something beyond there that was maybe a detention pond? You know, how does that area that is not disturbed by this project, but now you've kind of inherited this very degraded site and maybe some of them are outside your limit of work? You want to make sure that they're, the sedimentation and the erosion that's happened from there is corrected? And what the kind of long-term plan would be, it's probably not, you know, it's not an area where people are going to step close to the building, it's not a sort of high value landscape perhaps, but it is really important, I think, to ecologically repair it to make sure. close to the building. It's not a sort of high value landscape perhaps, but it is really important, I think, to ecologically repair it, to make sure that it's resilient to bigger storms and is providing, you know, infiltration as best it can and so forth and wildlife connectivity. So understanding what the plan is for that and then how you will manage the site over time from an operations and maintenance point of view invasive species management, habitat management and so forth. It'd be interesting even more about. Those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Sewer Chris. I have a lighting question also, thinking about the Mill Street, Forest Lane, Forest Street area across one twenty-eight. My other sort of more immediate concern is when things begin with the blasting. And so I'm just interested in how the blasting is going to be occurring. Is it going to be all day? I'm hoping that you are aware of our hours for blasting and that those will be strictly followed. Because the blasting, even for other parts of town, it will be noticeable. So I would just love to hear you know, the blasting schedule and when you envision the effect that we'll all be feeling every day.
Well, I don't know what you're going to be feeling. It depends on, on where you are.
This is very controlled blasting. The contractor that we're planning on hiring is mainly drilling and blasting, but the largest, most experienced company in the New England area. This is very controlled blasting. As we said, most of the work is really inside the clip. So there's a lot of relief that happens beforehand. So they, we drill down a series of holes around and then relieve off of those holes. So that we're, we're creating a new face basically what's there. What's happened in the past, it's been what they call open blasting. They'll set a charge and they'll just let it go. This, this is very, very controlled, much smaller blasting, much, much more refined area. That's why we're looking at like a hundred day activity as opposed to just going in and, you know, blowing the whole site up. Very, very controlled, small blast. I anticipate potentially a blast or two a day. So a- again, there's, there's always a misnomer and a fear with blasting. And this particular site, the way we're actually creating the, basically the, the interior of the building is very, very precise work. So it's not going to be like we're creating, you know, an open area to put, you know, housing or anything else. This is very specific inside of that, the footprint of the building. There will be some minor blasting in areas where we have to put in utilities. And there will be a point that's close to one twenty-eight where we may have to have a rolling blockade for one twenty-eight, which is not unusual. And main drilling and blasting will handle all the permitting and, and they've done other work in town, you know, the procedure here very, very well. You know, our, our, my hope, and I'm meeting with them on Thursday, is to have almost like a set time every day so you can expect. The, the good thing is I do not feel that the surrounding areas will really feel it. Again, we're not doing major charges. The, the MAC is probably the most effective by any of the blasting.
Why does it, one concern, which is that what we're having very narrow border street really is going to be handling a lot of traffic. I think the biggest concern is a potential conflict with pedestrians and bike managers. And I know we've talked about this before, that it really isn't enough ways to make any significant improvements to the road itself. I was hoping maybe a boardwalk could be, could be constructed to the side on the side of the road. Perhaps in the wetlands with the trustees' approval, in the way of relieving some of the conflict. I don't think it's a deal breaker. I just something I hope you can consider.
I had a couple of comments, sort of similar. What off-site work are you doing sort of off the, outside the limits of your bound of your jet, you know, site, the At Water Avenue. We'll want to talk about that during our traffic discussion. Is there going to be any proposed traffic calming? Is there a way we can encourage pedestrian safety with striping or you, you guys have experts who might be able to help us think about that? The other thing, I think, Mark, you've sent us, I can't find it. So it'd be nice to see it again, a, a table of contents of how our zoning matches with your plans. I think we, you would, Chris had suggested that. Maybe it's, anyway.
Sorry.
So I thought it was a brilliant idea that you would say section six point three point seven A is found on this that plan. If that's the, I think you did it. You did it and we just need to.
Did I do it?
And then actually I want, that my
I'll dig it out.
My larger point is that we actually have standards that we need to be mindful of, that those are our guiding principles. And their performance standards. So I'm sure that our consultant is looking at them carefully. There are two that when I went through the plans, I didn't see any mention of. I think we're probably, have you checked with the historic commission to see if there's any reason to need an archaeology, archaeological or historic resources in the inventory? It says we may, may require it, but I would ask that you just check with them. It's, it's a pretty disturbed site. I, I would expect we don't, but just ask them to weigh in if you don't mind. The other one is, you haven't mentioned irrigation. And it's a fairly large site and I'm sure that they'll, you'll need to irrigate a lot of things, at least to get them established. And what will be your source of irrigation water? Do you plan to use a irrigation well or do you plan to use potable water?
I can answer that now for you. We do have a rainwater harvesting system. It will be doing, you know, capture from the site and condensate and our, our reverse osmosis water from the building. So it's all been heavily tweaked. The irrigation plan is in the documents that were sent for the application. So that is documented in there. Yes. And then there was a question that came from that, from Weston Sampson that we did respond to.
Okay. The other thing is, as you do your geothermal wells, do you anticipate any dewater, any water management in that? Groundwater management? And have you done, there's some permitting usually for that water management?
We intend on recharging at the sites. The site's large enough that it will handle a recharge of the discharged water.
Okay, so Weston Sampson should be sure to look at that dewater, that water management plan during construction. Linda, I just know we have a site. Big issue. And then maybe for Anthony, I'm just, this is more of a curiosity, not a, but seventy wells for two hundred thousand square foot building. That's
Seventy wells.
Not very many.
Seventy wells for phase one, which is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So phase two, we're anticipating another eighty wells. So in total, it'll be somewhere
Okay. And then that question for the landscape, it looked almost like you were putting vegetation, I thought, in the same area as the wells. Is that possible?
The wells are deep.
Yeah, well, I know.
Exactly. And then in some places, we're actually grading the burning top, but that's, they can get along.
Yeah, okay. Great. Well, we look forward to the next.
Do, do you know when the next meeting will be?
So we anticipate being ready for you at every one of our second and fourth meetings, as long as we have something to talk about.
Have you determined the topic for the ten?
So that's, we're, it's whatever you, I guess, and what, want, want to talk about, but, and we're happy to take two. Our suggestion was that we take a couple of topics so that we can move you through.
Tell us what you'd like to hear and we will present it.
So so there was some discussion about traffic, but usually we kind of passed. Often tried to do the, the basic site and civil engineering drainage. Do that first so that there's a full understanding of what's occurring on the site and how it's going to function. How it'll be developed and then do traffic next. Either way, because we have done a kind of a general overview tonight, so.
I think what we, so I think Laura had suggested having stormwater and landscape and so all together because they're inter, it's, it's not just pretty plantings. So that would be a suggestion. And I guess we're open to how, what works for your consultants, given vacations and, and what. And I think traffic is an area where there'll be a fair amount of discussion.
Yeah.
But we could even try to do more, you know, I think stormwater and landscape is also obviously of great interest and probably some back and forth with Weston Sampson. We'll kind of look to you to tell us which topics you want. And if we want to we certainly understand. We don't have, besides that A and R, we currently don't have anything else.
A lot will depend on what the status of the back and forth between that and Weston Sampson is.
You can be in touch with Mark about what topics you want.
Yeah, and they may, in the course of the peer review, highlight the key topics and then we'd be happy to address.
Right now, we're planning on you for June tenth and June twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth and July eighth and July twenty-second if we need. So recognizing you waited for us, we're we're, we're planning on you, seeing a lot of you. So as, as it makes sense.
We will be in touch with Mark and, and we'll coordinate the presentation with you.
Sure. Okay, and we may want to do a site walk, but let me see if, let's see, Gail has her hand up and then we may, may have comments, want to take public comments. Gail, go ahead.
We do have applications coming in for the peers near Masconomo Park. And we will have three applications coming in from Foth Associates. Two came in today and there'll be another coming in next week or a little later. So we have multiple applications about the peers and the work that's going in around that area.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to give you the heads up on that.
Okay, great. So much for hiatus. And MBTA zoning too. Okay, great. Is there any, anybody want to make some public comment? And let me just give us little guidelines for how Terry, I'll get to you in just a second. Thank you. Because this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask people at each of our meetings to wait to be recognized. And please keep your comments relative, relevant to the application before us. And even if possible, how our zoning applies, but we're, you know, happy to also try to ask questions. If there's a lot of public comment, we may have to limit time to a couple of minutes as we do at town meeting, but hopefully we can get everybody's questions and comments out and and if we have questions that are the same from a couple of different people, we're going to try to consolidate those. Please state your name and address and we don't take questions in the chat. And we will take public comments each night of the hearing. So if for some reason you don't get your comments into the record tonight, there'll be other opportunities. Well, that's preamble. Terry Calman, thank you.
Thank you, Terry Calman, To Be Surf Village. A couple of questions. First, I think I'm very impressed with the site plan and the work that's going on here. My primary area of interest is going to be the transportation plan in and out and the surrounding impact on the surrounding area. I'd like to commend you for that STEM work that you're doing as the father of the middle school science teacher. So keep it going. With regard to questions, who is, what entity is responsible for coordinating the traffic plan around the work that's going to be happening on Forest and Mill Street? And then is anyone coordinating with Mass DOT on the infrastructure around the on-ramps and off-ramps at School Street?
Uh, Mark, can you answer that?
I, I would suspect that the town, Chuck Dam will be coordinating of the traffic issues with respect to Mill and Forest, because that's a town project. With respect to the ramps. Is there anything in the in the traffic report that dealt with those ramps during construction?
There were study points.
You speak up so.
So TEC is our traffic consultant. We would, I'm fairly confident there were several study points for the project as it went through town. That was the, the phase one didn't really trigger any improvement requirements, but phase two was one of the reasons we wanted to revisit this as we go. That's a great question for, for Sam from TEC. To address at a later time.
So Terry, we're going to take that up at our traffic meeting, which will probably be next in two weeks or in four weeks, I would guess. And there is, I'm sorry, at, there is a me, a study that NEPA did of the impacts on traffic on and off one twenty-eight. I'm not, I don't recall if they, I looked at it a while ago. They looked at during construction or just at completion.
We'll make sure see you at ten thirty meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other comments online. Anybody, we don't see anybody from public here. Of course.
I'm a very impressive presentation. Thank you. And I hope we can resurrect this traffic study that was done for SLB on the, on and off ramps, just so we can include, because that's, that was a hundred and thirty some odd units in there for approximately the same amount of traffic coming through.
So it's a good point. Maybe we can ask Gail to provide the board and the CST team, the SLB traffic study. Gail, is that something you have, you must have your hands, can get your hands on that, right?
I do, and the forty B is all still online, so we can pick it up right out of there.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's a good suggestion. And maybe make sure, Mark, we'll make sure Weston Sampson sees that as well. That's great. Another, I think they did it like December twenty-nine or something. It was a problem, but that's it's still data. Great, good thought. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a question. It wasn't brought up tonight, but I thought our local building inspector was not going to be the building inspector on these large projects. Was I incorrect?
That, but I believe that these large projects are under what's called controlled construction. Maybe Peter or Mark can define that. I know the school building, the high school building was under controlled construction, which meant that the, the engineers and the architects of record stamped plans to certify that they complied with building codes and other elements of the plan.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. So that's my assumption, but there will obviously be oversight by the building inspector as well. I don't have any, we can maybe ask Greg for any clarification.
Well, I, I just thought we had had a prior conversation that with the bigger projects in town that the applicant was, I, I don't quote me, but I thought that we had said that, that, you know, due to capacity and time restriction, that it wasn't going to be the local building inspector. We were going to do a different option, so I'm just asking.
I mean, usually the mill inspector is still I mean, usually the building inspector is still responsible for overseeing the construction of the building. However, he may um utilize additional. You know, consultants to assist him and as well as reviewing, you know, his built. So to speak, uh testing reports and all the other things that are submitted to his office, so. Um so again, that'll be some further discussion for the building commissioner. To uh to determine how he's going to handle that.
At the meetings to. He was going.
Now, generally, the building commissioner is responsible for the building, so larger projects oftentimes, planning board has a site inspector. Who will uh inspect the site construction to ensure that. Roads are constructed uh in accordance with the the drawings, basins, landscaping are installed certain ways. So, you know, again, that's a discussion that we can have down as as we move forward. Whether we continue to use Weston Sampson to do some of those uh onsite inspections and so.
It's a good question.
That's quite um common.
Yeah, there's you, uh sometimes a performance guarantee bond as well.
Yes.
Um I know when I was on the anywhere in Newbury, we had large subdivisions. So we had a consultant that did exactly what you've described and we held promised bond that we released based on their recommendation. So but I think that's a good point that we should um talk about further. Okay, um. Site uh walk. Um some of you, some of us haven't been there in a while, some of us maybe never been. Um at least to the site, so we, Mark was suggesting that um we may want to have another sidewalk. We, I think we had also suggested that if the public, making it open to the public, who may not have seen the. Particularly how disturbed the site is. So um if you're amenable to that, um we need to set a date and post that. Um people have gone before.
I would request a weekday.
A weekday, yes, okay. Yeah, um well, I was gonna suggest maybe before our ma- June tenth meeting. We did it at five o'clock, five to six. But I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, some people, some of us have been there before and may not, may not be able to make it, but. Then people coming from your team out of town, but you know, not all of you need to go. I think Peter can.
No, it's a Matt will be it.
Yeah, break your butt spray. Um okay, ten, let's um post that for five o'clock to six o'clock on the. You can get sandwiches or something. On June tenth. How's that sound? Okay, as a proposal. Okay, great. Um thank you. And then I guess, do we need a motion to continue the hearing?
Yes.
Yes, I'll take a motion to continue the uh hearing to um. At seven P M.
So moved.
So moved by Philbrick.
I'll second it.
Okay, um all, I think, can we, we don't need your voice, though, do we? Yeah. Oh, we have to vote, take a vote. Allany?
Yes.
Uh Philbrick, yes. Any, yes.
Yes.
Foley, yes.
Yes.
Booster and creating votes, yes. Um great, thank you very much, team, as usual, for being um well prepared and. Um commenting, appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for lighting. Yes, right, yeah.
Yeah. I might just leave this here.
I found if I took the appendices, I would do it a lot lighter. Um okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um at this time, if um. I'll ask if there is any additional public comments.
I'm not even.
Anyway, um I don't see anybody with additional public comments. Thank you. Clarifying question, absolutely. I think it's Mark. So all the, all the, is there anything new that was put in our packet since then? I know the team's been working.
So what what is new, which is what Sarah had mentioned, was placed in the uh the folder. Under applications for twenty twenty-four, it's a folder for CST. It's the uh uh the Weston and Sampson initial review.
Oh, great, okay.
Probably the um response to the comments, probably going next as well. And we will also put in the full app, although it's on the webpage, we'll upload, we have to have it broken out.
Yeah, I tried to put it on.
Yeah.
Does the full application contain anything that's not in here?
Yeah, that's, the full application is not on, in that folder. It's on the uh planning board website. On the left-hand side, you'll see CST and all the, the application is there.
And that should also be what you got on the thumb drive, right? Yes, thank you for the writer. Okay, yeah. Okay, great.
Did you say there was an updated um traffic study?
No.
Just the S L B one.
Right, that we asked the S L B one, which was a good suggestion. Um applying anything else? Um. Great, um I would take a minute's approval for March eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion. Um you guys, no votes. Um uh all in favor? The chair votes yes, that's five, uh yes, and two abstentions, Gail. Um motion to approve the uh minutes of March twenty-fifth.
So moved.
So I have a second. Sure, okay. Um again, um any discussion, comments? Um all in favor? Again, five and two abstentions. Um so our next meetings, we're gonna add Thursday, June sixth for task force and planning board. And we have June tenth and June twenty-fourth and July eighth. Um and at the next meeting, among the things that Gail mentioned, I don't know about yet, we'll be talking about liaisons to other committees. Okay, any other matters that um we didn't anticipate before setting the agenda?
Oh, I had a question. Um where is our rule of regulations? There are our rules and regulations.
You sent me an email about that. Uh Gail sent the, I asked her and she, and I haven't had a chance to follow up. So I will um put them in our place where we can all find them. But we um voted two things. One is the committee handbook and then a draft with track changes. Which uh of our rules, which are kind of in that limbo state that's. I'll put them in a place we can find them and send them to everybody.
Yes, I think it would be good for new members and um if it's still in draft, we should try to get them out of draft.
So I'll try and do, because we have two new members, I'll see what we have in our. Our SharePoint for folders and if I need to create a new one for like rules and regs. I'll put in all the current, I'll put in whatever we have for rules and regs. Whatever other appropriate um planning board related things, so that they'll all be in one place.
Yeah, I think we need to do, yeah, we need a little bit of um reorganization of our.
Yeah.
You know, maybe moving some things to archive, not losing anything and then um.
Yeah, I'll try.
That Gail um responded to when the rules and when they were within the dances. So I just haven't had a chance to send it back.
Yeah, she did respond, I know.
Yeah, you were sick last week and.
Yeah.
So, okay, so our homework um is by Friday to review the zoning, the draft zoning. For the um uh task force. And I think Mary's, you know, you can send your input as questions or as comments in an email. Or if you have specific um to. And that's because we can't send it to everybody, because then it becomes technically deliberation.
And we may not be able to change every comment that people put in. We will do our best at making changes to um. And then if you don't see it at the next meeting, your change is in there. That's the opportunity to say, oh, I sent a comment about something on page three. Um is, you know, why did that get changed? You know, and then we would explain why we felt it wasn't a good change. Or we changed something else, so we don't need to do, make that adjustment. So so not extend everything and try and make an evaluation. I'll discuss it with our consultant, with Emily, to try and get a a one version sent back.
About soon, with a Tuesday or Wednesday. So the other thing is if there are topics such as um Mary identified and I agree on. Um that are things to be discussed. So should pools be allowed by right in the Beaver Dam Road District is on my list. Um so I'll, I'll send that as a topic to discuss and then maybe they can go on the agenda to just. Rather than sending it as, I think that should be crossed out, it's not very, you know, um those are. And then I think um. The question of uh the special permit, we. Understand, I think we are agreeing that special permits cannot be allowed for the multifamily housing. That sounds to me like we agree. What we disagree, maybe the discussion is, is that the course of action we want to pursue? Um so the course of action could change by removing parcels that are in the water protection district. That's one that takes that one off the table. Or going forward with what we believe is a non-compliant version. Or leaving it as, it seems to me, at least as an example of the three. And we can vote that. That seems to me, that, I mean, as an example, but.
I just argue, make the point that if you submit a non-compliant version, you know you're submitting a non-compliant version. So that's what, you're not doing your job. Your job is to submit the compliant version and to come up something that. Uh you know, that will pass muster. Now, so I think that's the charge too.
But let's have a, have that discussion and vote whether whether we want to pursue, which which paths we want to pursue. I think, um I mean, we have one member who would like to just, like to propose that we, I think, that we require special permits. For everything.
Well, no, I know, because you can't. So that's not my proposal.
Okay, so maybe you can make a specific proposal that that we can, that's actionable.
Yeah, so to 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 clarify then, so then I think we're just sending to you kind of typos and.
Or or even even substantive suggestions. That even, even if it's something I can't change, maybe I'll keep a running list. And so that the, that can be a discussion of those items as well. So we can have two things. One is all the corrections and changes. And I don't think that pool should be as of right, right? And please make it a special permit, because we can make that a special permit. The housing's not.
Oh, I see, yeah, that, that part.
So and that, that point has been made already. So. So I will probably make that change, but um uh but o- other things. And then other things that maybe, oh, Beaver Dams and the Water Resource District, I would like to discuss. Something, even though the committee's already, you know, uh voted that district, but at least you can make that point.
Right.
And I'll have a list of that. Or, you know, obviously, that's a huge thing, but more minor things.
I guess my point is that when we make, when we make suggestions, they should be actionable. Something that we can make a decision rather than just a a problem. Um so. But I'm saying. I don't like that we, the pool thing suggests that we continue to make it a special permit. So think about it as things that can be implemented um and um and if we disagree, voted. Um but I think we're all in agreement that um. Special permits for those items in the, for multifamily would be a non-compliant. So I guess that's, that's not, was not our charge. Yeah, question. Um following on, so if there, I would want to know that we. Want to flag things that, and we discuss them, pool, no pool, official permit, whether we're making a. Opinion about something that's going to bring us out of compliance, because that's got to have more filters on it than, I don't like pools by right, you know.
If it's gonna bring us out of compliance, I'm not gonna make the change.
Okay, well, that's.
Add it to the second list, that someone brought up the fact that we should have a new special permit requirement for, you know.
So I think if there's. Exactly. If there's clarity or, you know, transparency around that, we're not making that change because it's gonna bring us out of compliance. Just, let's just be clear that we don't want to, you know, chew around this thing so much that we, that we pull this district and we pull that district. And now we're not making it work. And same with dimensionally, I have some, you know, comments about whether the. Parking requirements for, you know, the denser districts are going to make, it might be compliant, but are they actually going to make it feasible? Given the spatial constraints. Um so, you know, those are things to discuss, but I just want to make sure we don't accidentally tip it out of compliance. So you'll keep us honest on that.
Do my best.
Okay, Mary.
Um I just have a concern in the process, because I don't want us to be out of um, in an open meeting law violation. So with board members are sending you comments and you're picking and choosing. Because we've gone down this road before and you pick and choose which ones you're going to change, that violates the open meeting law. So if it's spit your errors, that's fine. But you can't take a planning board member's opinion and change the document without discussing it.
Well.
At a meeting, or this is, and perhaps this isn't a planning board document yet.
It doesn't really matter. Um it can be changed for discussion, you know, at the next meeting. So that's, that's not a open meeting law violation. Um you know, so.
I think a staff member can make changes to a document and then represent it as a version two.
Well, I'll pull out the open meeting again, but but so then we'll have, this will be draft three. So if we give you comments by Friday, when will we have draft three to review before the meeting?
Uh hopefully by the end of the day, Monday.
Did you say Tuesday?
Well, you said Tuesday. I know, if I don't put, put it, that's pressure on myself to do it.
Yeah.
It'll be the end of the day, Tuesday, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure, it it could be a lengthy document, so.
Yeah, well, if uh, I know Chris has already sent changes in and so some trick going before.
Okay, we'll try to get them in. It would help, Mark, if we get it in before Friday. Okay, great. Um and questions also, we can ask.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can understand something.
We have two new people who have, although they have seen several of the meetings.
Okay, great. Um. Anything else?
I just have one question. What packet were you talking about?
I would, uh we'll show you, it's on the um, it's on the, once you sign in with your email.
Yeah.
It's on OneDrive on SharePoint. There's a, so there's like a, for each, we can show you after this. There's a meetings folder and there's a folder for each of our meetings. And that's sort of the, in years ago, we used to get a a packet of actual giant folder of stuff, so um.
Like this.
Like that. But um.
This is.
Yeah. Um so, uh Hunt, uh Gail.
Yeah, it works too. The meeting, the meeting packets are also posted on the website, on the planning board website. If you want to see everything that's in the SharePoint folder, it's posted on the website for residents who are interested. So there is still a meeting packet. Usually gets there Monday morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um any other um?
I move, will you turn?
So a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.